To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Claudia?
Here.
Tracy Ellen?
Here.
Barbara?
Here.
Alan?
Here.
Annette?
Here.
Stephanie?
Here.
John?
Here.
Doug?
Here.
Al?
Here.
Elizabeth? Anna? Joy. The New Jersey Open Public Meetings Law was enacted to ensure the right of the public to have advanced notice of and to attend the meetings of public bodies at which any business affecting their interests is discussed or acted upon. In accordance with this provision of this act, the Riverdale Regional Board of Education has caused notice of this regular meeting to be publicized by having the date, time, and place bear of sent to the record and the Star-Ledger newspapers, the Conduit Borough Clerk, and Borough Libraries, as well as posting in the school district principal offices, faculty rooms, and the board office. According to New Jersey Public Law 2001, Chapter 226, "The smoking or use of any tobacco product is strictly prohibited anywhere in the public school buildings or anywhere on school grounds, including but not limited to the parking lots, grassy areas, and athletic fields. Violators will be subject to a fine not to exceed $100." Next to the next to bind.
No?
The mission of the Riverdale Regional School District is to provide a safe, student-centered environment in which each student is valued and respected, to challenge each student to reach their potential, to nurture every student's intellectual, social, physical, and emotional growth, to promote a healthy work ethic, a passion for learning, and a respect for oneself and other, to develop responsible citizens for a diverse community and an ever-changing world, to continue to involve our community in an active partnership, to provide all students the opportunity to achieve and exceed the New Jersey Student Learning Standards.
Thank you, Annette. We'll go into public comments on agenda items only. And as always, we will have a segment at the end of the meeting for public comments on anything else pertaining to Riverdale Regional School District. Does anybody have any public comments on agenda items only? Okay, good. We have a presentation tonight. The Girls Indoor Track Team State Championship Recognition. Dennis Nelson and his coach here tonight?
Um, Mr. Pepe's gonna be assistant.
He's stepping in, okay, standing in. And I will join you folks. So Dennis, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Graff. Thank you to the Board of Education for giving the athletic department this opportunity to publicly recognize and acknowledge our Girls Indoor Track Team for their performance this past winter season. Uh, thank you too to Mr. Pepe and Mr. Graff for helping with this. Our Girls Indoor Track Team, if it seems like they were here not that long ago, it's because they were. About this same time last year, the girls won the indoor track championship in 2022. They did it again in 2023. So they are back-to-back group state champions. Uh, this is the third state group title for our Girls Indoor Track Team. They also won in 2016. Uh, from Paul Schwartz, who writes for the record for Track and Field, Riverdale became just the fourth girls' team in North Jersey history to win back-to-back state titles, when the Golden Hawks won the Group Two title with the highest public school score of any team, all weekend, boys or girls. Uh, the boys' indoor track and spring track teams won back-to-back titles in 2015 and 16. And this is the second time a girls' team at Riverdale has won back-to-back titles. Uh, Girls Indoor Track now joins volleyball, who won those in 2014 and 2015. So a round of applause to our Girls Indoor Track Team. I'd like to call the girls up, uh, you know, by name, and just come on up, girls, and we'll give you your sweatshirt to commemorate your state title. Sophia Minich? Emily Terschman? Jessica Hacker? Abigail Ra? Kristen Smerdin? Grace McQueeney? Erin Hoogstraite? Marissa Schoenberg? Morgan Levine? Rachel Mills? Gianna Grisham? Erin Brady? Aubriana Rivera? Caitlin Gallagher? Christina Allen? Sarah Cookson? Isabella Gabay? Abigail Bartoloni? Aaliyah Abraham? And Farley Barrows? Would it be okay if we got the girls all up here together? Yeah. Girls, would you please come forward? We'll get to this little... Thank you again.
He's running out the door right now. Yeah. Good swag. Good swag.
Thank you, Dennis.
Thank you.
Is that... Dennis, is that one?
Is there one?
It probably may have left it on purpose. I'm gonna check.
Okay. Let's get into the student member report. I don't know who's gonna start, Joy or Lizzie?
I'll start. So we had a few events happening this past two weeks at Riverdale. Coach Barrinello and Mrs. Van Toll created the positivity pail for students to say positive during the B-Day lunch periods. Students can pull a note from the positivity pail, keep it, or pass it on. Congratulations to the Riverdale Robotics Team on an amazing season. Did one of the best year-long performances in history. Congratulations to the RDHS artists who have their work presented at the Cape Lookout National Seashore Visitor Center in North Carolina. The exhibition will be open from March 5th to September 5th, 2023. The Riverdale Marching Band performed in the St. Patrick's Day Parade in New York City on March 17. Riverdale's teachers and students met with a class of 2027 at the middle school on March 23rd for the elective choice presentation. It was great to meet everyone. The Riverdale Drama Club presented their annual spring musical, The Little Mermaid, this weekend. Congratulations and a job well done to all the students who are part of it. And lastly, for the high school, the Science National Honor Society and Environmental Club set up activity stands and participated in the annual Oradell Makers' Day this past weekend. Thank you to all the students who helped out. And as for the middle school, congratulations to the Riverdale Middle School Hawks Student Spotlight recipients for the month of March. They are 7th graders Ethan Ly, Dylan Striano, Kaylee Taylor, and Heman Sagaye, and 8th graders Hunter Barone, Janice Pina, Eric Remundi, and Akriti Ram. Students were nominated by staff members for displaying high character and academics at the middle school. The Middle School Crochet Club also participated in the 2023 Makers' Day at the Oradell Library this past Saturday. They did a great job teaching the art of crochet to all who stopped by their table. Thanks for making the day extra special by bringing your kind of support and leadership skills by representing Riverdale Middle School. More for the middle school. Riverdale alum Matt Rivas, who currently works with the New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection, recently met with 8th grade science classes to discuss and answer questions about the environment. Simultaneously, 8th grade science classes have been engaged in classroom debates focusing on renewable energy versus the use of fossil fuels. The students have spent a week preparing by gathering information and learning about how to debate, and will spend the next few days competing. Last Friday, Riverdale Middle School held a three-on-three basketball tournament to benefit those affected by the earthquakes in Turkey and Syria. The fundraiser, which also included a bake sale, totaled almost $600, which will be donated to the relief initiative. Thank you to Mrs. O'Connor, Ms. Lee, Ms. Valerani, Ms. Ross, and the Environmental Club, and the 8th grade student ambassadors for organizing. Thank you also to Mr. Facendola and high school students, Chris Nastasi, Larson Walker, and Matt Kelher for refereeing the event. Congrats to the winning team made up of Nick Clark, Dario Quizel, and Devin Ziegler. Now for sports at the high school. Spring sports kicked off this past week. Good luck to all the student athletes. And congratulations to Christina Allen for being the first feature in the NJSIAA Student Ambassador Spotlight Series. Now for upcoming events. The Interact Club will be hosting senior citizen prom this Wednesday, March 29. The junior class will be having prom this Thursday. The freshman class will be presenting their annual Romeo and Juliet viewing for selected grade levels this Friday. And this week marks the end of marking period three.
Thank you.
My report tonight is very short. Uh, I'll steal Alan's thunder a little bit, if you don't mind, Alan, about the Ford Golf outing that it's now available to sign up. And I know we did have a couple of board members attend the dinner only, so there is an option to play golf and dinner, or just dinner. So Alan would be able to supply an application form for that. And we had a brief discussion over here before the meeting, and I had written it down to speak about this. The financial disclosures, Trudy, has everybody taken care of that? I know there was a deadline of early March.
Right, mostly everything is being taken care of. There are one or two little tweaks, and they're all working on it.
Okay, so we're complete on that. Okay, good. I'll pass it to you, Mr. Fletcher.
So just a couple of items from my report as well, which I just want to emphasize a couple of things that our students mentioned earlier. The senior-senior prom, which is going to be on Wednesday. It's at 5:00. It's in the cafeteria. Uh, and it is run by our Interact Club. Uh, it's a wonderful evening. If you want to just pop by and say hello, I think it's a great opportunity for anybody to be there. We will begin in... Uh, next week, we will begin our process of the Youth Truth Survey. It's a survey that we've done for the last four or five years, I think it's five years, where we survey our students, as well as their families, on their feelings towards the school, as well as any areas that we may need to focus on. Um, it's been a fairly invaluable tool for us. I shouldn't say fairly invaluable. It's been an invaluable tool for us because we've used the information that's come out of it to help, uh, just move some programming along. And it's... This is just the latest version of it. When I first came here 17 years ago, we were involved with a group called Futuristics that used to do surveying for us. And, um, so Riverdale has had this long experience of doing it, and it has had an impact on how we've moved forward with programming. So it will open next week, and we will have the opportunity for our students to take it in their English class. So we have a very high rate of return from students. And then our families are pretty good at it, too. Last year, I think we had about a 48% return rate, which is pretty exceptional at that time. Uh, I also attended The Little Mermaid. I went to the Thursday evening show. It was just a wonderful experience. Brought a little tear to my eye because it was a really... I remember watching that movie with my daughter, taking my daughter to the movie when she was a little girl. Now she's turning 30, believe it or not. So it was a wonderful experience. And she attended the evening with me. So we had a little nice opportunity to do that. I also, um, sat in on one of Matt Rivas's presentations. It's wonderful that we've had this great opportunity to bring students back to Riverdale in order to provide some understanding to students at a young age, at the middle school age, at the high school age, as to what the future can hold. Uh, we're also having, um... Who's coming, Mari? Is it Buster? Cosmo. Cosmo Mari is coming to talk about his local experience that we've dealt with, and his family's tragedy that they've dealt with. It's a very powerful moment when we have a student that comes back and talks like that. And it takes a lot of courage for that to happen. So we very much appreciate that opportunity. And then finally, I'd like to let everybody know that Dr. Albro was into the district on Friday. Uh, he was escorted around both buildings by student ambassadors. One of our ambassadors is sitting here at the desk. Joy was part of the high school team that took him around. Very nice comments from the group regarding it. And he sent me a great note afterward thanking everybody for the welcome. Over the course of the next couple of months, we will have opportunities for Dr. Albro to meet with our staff, as well as to meet with our community as we go forward with the transition moving forward. And that will include the fact that our break week is the week before his. So that week that he is on vacation, or his school's on vacation, we will be back in session, and he'll be here for a couple of opportunities to create that meetings. So we're well on our way in our transition. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Sounds good. I know we had some cancellations on committee meetings, but I'll just run through the roster here, and you can just fill us in. Budget and finance, Doug, anything?
Uh, we did meet, but I had late-breaking news as I came in from Trudy that our budget was approved by the county.
Okay, good. Facilities and security, John?
We did not meet, but I'm happy to see that the administration took up our request from the last meeting and prepared a packet. And we're looking forward to the discussion on the referendum.
Mm-hmm. To be continued. Uh, community relations and technology, Alan?
Uh, we were gonna have a meeting tomorrow, and it got canceled. So...
Curriculum, Annette?
I'm seeing here nothing to report at this time.
Okay. Policy and governance, Barbara?
We did not meet, nothing to report.
Okay, and we're gonna shore up those next meeting dates. I'm sure Patrick and Trudy will get dates to us shortly. I know we had some planned already. I don't know if...
We do.
Okay. To make up for lost time. Okay, let's jump into the consent agenda. May I have a motion, please?
I'll make that motion.
Claudia?
I'll second.
Okay, does anybody have any questions or issues, concerns about anything on the consent agenda? No? Okay. Trudy, when you're ready?
Claudia?
Yes.
Alan?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Annette?
Yes.
Tracy Ellen?
Yes.
Doug?
Yes.
Barbara?
Yes.
Stephanie?
Yes.
Al?
Yes. Okay, the first item outside of consent is... Under 13, Finance and District Operation, Letter D, the superintendent, at the request of the Board Secretary, recommends that the board accept line item transfers and the adjustments as listed in the financial report for the month ending February 2023. May I have a motion, please?
No.
I'll second.
Who's that, Doug motion, and Alan second?
I didn't have that much enthusiasm for the motion.
Okay. Trudy?
Claudia?
Yes.
Alan?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Annette?
Yes.
Tracy Ellen?
Yes.
Doug?
Yes.
Barbara?
Yes.
Stephanie?
Yeah.
Al?
Yes. Okay, the second item, we're gonna kind of go halfway on this one. It's also under 13, Finance and District Operation, L. Be it resolved that the Board of Education of the Riverdale School District in the County of Bergen hereby approves the submission of these educational adequacy projects and capital renovation projects to the Department of Education for review and approval, and for the amendment to the long-range facilities plan for a proposed upcoming referendum. The district will be seeking debt service aid for the projects as per the Educational Facilities Construction and Financing Act, effective July 18, 2000, rather. The projects will be submitted in separate applications for the educational adequacy review and approval, and for capital projects review and approval. May I have a motion, please?
I'll vote for it.
Alan, second?
I'll second.
John? Okay, now we go into discussion of the referendum. So I'll let Patrick start because maybe Patrick can just fill us in as to what happened from the last meeting to the literature and information that was sent out via Patrick's email dated March 23rd.
Right, so Trudy and I will be part of this conversation, as part of this as we go forward. I'll just talk about some generalized plans, and I'll have Trudy explain in more detail what we sent to you last Thursday. Um, I think it was Thursday, anyway. So this is the... Almost the culmination of our project for the last year. I say almost because the process for everybody to understand is that tonight, what you're simply doing is approving the submission of plans to the Department of Education for review. What will then happen is after they do the review, you will be presented at another meeting in the future with a resolution that will actually describe the question that will appear on the ballot. It's important to understand that whatever we decide this evening as far as the amount is concerned that's in there is not reflected in this resolution, per se. It's reflected in that resolution that will come forward later. Because later, it will say something along the lines, and I'm being very, very general in this, that the Board of Education is offering a referendum on XYZ date for... I'm making this up so that it's crazy, $100 million, and that the State Department of Education will be providing debt service aid for $75 million. Something to that effect, so that you see the gross number, and you understand that there's a net number involved, which is actually the one that will affect the community taxation in both of the communities. What we've done is based upon the conversations that we had at our last couple of board meetings, Trudy and I met with the architect to provide some context to that discussion. And then we met four or five days later after they were able to review their estimates based upon that context. And then Trudy, I'm gonna turn it over to her now, helped put this together, our presentation, or the spreadsheet that you are going to be working off of this evening. You should be aware that this resolution that's on the agenda right now would affect... Would cover... There's four options on that sheet. Would cover options 1, 2, and 3. Should the board decide to include all the projects that are in option number 4, then we have wording prepared to adjust this resolution to include that. Trudy, if you wouldn't mind, please?
Okay, so the spreadsheet that has the blue highlights on it, this was the spreadsheet we had reviewed the prior meeting. And then we had the architect go ahead, and we made some adjustments to the projects themselves. So anything highlighted in blue, those numbers have changed from the time before that you received it on March 7th to this time. So anything in blue, those were changes to those numbers. Okay? We did remove from the project both, at this point, both the gym floor at the middle school and the gym floor at the high school. Okay? So then you have all the different columns adding up to basically... If we want to just do all the items that are ranked 1, the total cost would be $13,697,500. If we wanted to column 1 and 2, all the projects would be $16,042,450. If we want to do 1, 2, and 3, so basically, all the projects except the gym floors, it would come out to be $17,995,450. Million. Oh, yeah, oh, boy. Okay, oh, boy.
That's a great price. You did really good negotiating.
By the architect. The winner!
Oh, boy. $17 million.
The first time we let it go, the second time we have to...
Okay, $17 million. Excuse me. Okay. And if we were to do all the projects, including the gym floors, it would be $18,543,350.
I like to bet I went with $1,000.
I know, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Drop off that...
What was the total old number? $19 million? Yeah, I was about to say.
That we originally gave you the number?
Yeah.
Very high, $19 million.
Right. And 1, 2, and 3 was in the $18,000 change?
1 was $14 million. 1 and 2 was $16,900. And 1, 2, and 3 was $19,600.
1, 2... And what was 1, 2, 3?
1, 2, in the old one, 1, 2...
Okay, in the old one.
1, 2, 3 included.
Would be the one with the floor.
Correct.
Did you column over on the right, which is the previous total, is less by $1.1 million, now it looks like?
Yeah.
And then the other two sheets that I've given you, or relates front to back, those spreadsheets just have all the details of how we got to these numbers. So it gives you the construction costs. It gives you the estimate of the actual, the units, the costs of the jobs. And these are estimates because we wouldn't be doing these jobs for probably another two or three years, depending on where in the cycle. So these numbers have to be estimates.
I did have one question, and Patrick did answer it for me. Trudy, on his... On the email that listed the revisions to the original spreadsheet under high school, you have high school security, and it's plus $13,900. And on the spreadsheet, it was put into the column above security? So it's in under graphics and asbestos removal?
Right.
Okay, just so everyone knows that. It didn't increase the high school security film column at all?
Right.
Okay. So, John, since this kind of falls under your umbrella as the chairperson of the Facilities Committee, you wanna...
I'd be happy to start us off. Just to repeat a little bit of the last meeting. I mean, my view has been clear in that because we have that 33% subsidy, 34% subsidy from the state, I'm not sure how long that's going to last. So even though we see a fairly substantial number here, the actual impact to the taxpayers will be 2/3 of this number. And I'm in favor of funding all of these because at some point or another, the taxpayers have to take care of these expenses. They weren't randomly picked. This came from an original list that was north of $40 million, $40, $50 million number that the architect gave us when they did a complete walkthrough of the entire facility. This list has now been pared down multiple times until we reached here. So I'm in favor of funding the maximum amount So, I'm in favor of funding the maximum amount all the way on the right side of the column, and I think it's the responsible thing to do to get us our school what it needs and take the subsidy from the state, which I think will be a great savings to the taxpayer.
I know during the last meeting, we had, whatever it was, an hour-long conversation. There was a lot of back and forth, what projects to do, what projects not to do, and I believe toward the end of the meeting, we finally just said, "Let's put a vote to it." Trudy, do you remember what the actual vote was? I'm thinking it was five, five-three in favor of doing a higher referendum number? Because I know Stephanie was not here, so there were only eight of us here. Was it five-three or six-two?
I think it was six-two.
It was six-two, okay. So, in lieu of sitting here going through all this again, you know, where, where do we start? Does anybody echo John's opinion as to go for number four? Go ahead, Alan.
Yeah, I agree totally with John because the way things are going with healthcare costs and other expenses, who knows in two years if we'll have, what our capital reserve will be for any big project? And the other thing is we're getting a thirty-three percent discount on this number, which, when you do it from capital reserve, we're gonna fund the whole thing. So, I think we're saving the taxpayer six million, four-hundred thousand, I think that's what the number would be, and I think it's the responsible thing to do because a lot of it is not any kind of decoration or anything, it's, you know, air filters, you know, air filtration systems, HVAC, new gymnasium floor, which especially in the middle school is a horror, and I think we need to do it because it's gonna be done sooner or later. And like John said, you know, we have a governor now that has initiated the thirty-three percent. Who knows if the new governor comes in? What'll happen, whether they'll start cutting or a district like ours won't get any money. Places like Trenton and Newark and Patterson will get the money. You don't know what the future holds, so I think it would behoove us to do it. On March fourteenth, there were a bunch of referendums that were voted on, being in Pagoda, Riverdale, Bridgewater, Maywood. Three of the projects our architect did, they all passed. The only referendum that didn't pass was a brand-new school for Hillsdale where they weren't getting hardly anything back from the state because it's all new construction. It was an eighty-two-million-dollar referendum and that failed. But all the others passed, and they were all around twenty million dollars. So, I think we should be responsible and move forward with this.
Okay. Do you folks wanna kind of have your piece? Starting with Annette. No, I'm only, I don't think Lizzie wants to say anything. And I'm only saying that because the two, I believe, were Claudia and myself.
Yeah.
So, you know, everyone, we're kind of in the do-everything phase right now of conversation. If any of you four wanna add anything to what these two gentlemen have just said?
No, I think I echo what Alan and John said. I feel it's been well researched and documented. We have some history of other towns as well, so I echo what they do. I'm in favor of funding.
I just want to add that I think the Board has already done their fiscal due diligence in the matter. When the project was first brought forward to us, it was not a considerable amount more, but it was in fact more than it is moving forward. And I think it's because the Board recognizes the financial responsibility to the taxpayer that we kept going back to the architect and asking them for modifications to the original plan. And I am confident that the number that we arrived at is no fat in the project. It is things that need to be taken care of, care of in the near future, and as John and Alan had said, not taking advantage of the funds that will be made available by the state would be, I kind of did some rough mathematics again, again, third-grade teacher, not high school, and in the end, it would roughly cost us about a hundred-and-sixty-five-thousand additional dollars to do both gym floors after the referendum, and that would have to come out of our capital reserve. And why put our taxpayers in a position where we'd be? These projects have to be done. It's not that they're fluff or cosmetic. They are projects that need to be done. And why would we put our taxpayers in a situation where we would be giving them a larger bill than necessary? And I'd hate to begin projects and leave something undone that later we'll regret not doing, and later we can't guarantee we'd have the money for. If the state's willing to help us bypass all of the cost and take some of it on, I think we'd be foolish not to.
Yeah, I'm just reiterating what Tracy and everyone else said. I think, I think there's, there's two things. I mean, the one, we pared it down, the number that we're looking at to do everything that was on the list is actually more or less in line with what the Board as a whole agreed to in, I'll say, column three, which was with the elimination of the, of the gymnasium floor. So, you know, if you want to say we're not being additive, in essence, from the last time we had this discussion. And yes, the gym floor is gonna have to be done, whether it is three years from now or five years from now. We are gonna, you know, we're gonna have to pay that out of, out of our budget, we're not gonna get the additional funds. And also, the reality is, it is one of the very few projects on the list. You know, the majority of money is going towards HVAC and mechanical upgrades that no student, parent, teacher will ever physically see. I mean, there's benefits from airflow and, and heating and money savings, but when someone walks in the building, they'll never know that that took place, and that's where the bulk of the money is. The other few items that are being addressed, the locker rooms, our students, obviously will see that the community is not going to for the most part. And so, what they're gonna see is the upgrades to the auditoriums, but really, it's the two gyms that get the most use from the community because all of the rec sports play in those gyms. So, you have, you have, you know, a broad base of the community that sees that, that will never see, even the auditoriums. And so, I think, you know, cost savings, giving something that we're gonna need to do anyway, and then having the community, you know, those resources that get used so much, that really should be kept up to appropriate standards. So, I'm, I'm in agreement with going for the full vote.
Very good. Before we go to Barbara, Trudy, can you just, again, explain, we're not just sanding the gym floors and repainting stripes, it's an actual.
Replacements.
Pull up the wood.
Correct.
It's gonna be an entire redo of both, both gymnasium floors.
Correct.
And then obviously sanded and shined and new stripes and logos.
Correct.
Okay. They seem to be the lost stepchild in the project, so just wanted to clarify that. Barbara, you have anything to add to?
Nothing to add, I think everybody covered it. I'm in agreement with doing things now with the added funding from the state.
Stephanie, since you were not here, let's hear what you have to say.
Well, I'm not redoing the conversation, but it seems to be like everybody's sort of looking at the last column and, and, and just talking about the gym floors, so it's just column three and column four. But there is column two, which is significantly different. There isn't a lot of difference between column three and column four. You're right. If you were thinking about doing all column three, then the way it's been pared down and the number that column four has come to is very reasonable. But there's a big difference between doing just the one and two priorities and, you know, and column four, for lack of a better word, I apologize for people who can't see it. I disagree a little bit with, with the way that Doug has, you know, characterized, there's a lot of stuff that will be programmatic and curricularly done in here, and, and that is seen by a lot of the students, especially in the middle school, because that's gonna touch the majority of the students because a lot of it has to do with their, their rotation of their, their special classes or their classes that are outside of their core. And for, for anybody who knows, you know, working in a building that doesn't have good air and doesn't have good heat, it does impact the way the, you know, the students do that. So, you know, the gym floor, everybody might want, but I, but I think that there's a lot more to the lesser portion. I mean, had I been here, I would have been in the minority. I mean, I think probably everybody could have guessed that, you know, and it wouldn't have changed, you know, that. You know, am I, if, if, if the majority again is, you know, is going for the full force, am I, you know, gonna stand behind that, of course? There's wonderful things in that project, but, you know, I'm much, still much more comfortable at that sixteen range. That really does make a difference to the taxpayers when you also save that, you know, thirty-three percent on, on the parts that it qualifies for.
Okay. Claudia?
So, I appreciate Pat and Trudy going back again and again and again to try to finite, like, you know, take away, shed some numbers and bring it down. Because in my mind, I always kept saying, you know, and I've been saying this, if we're gonna do it, I don't want to go over fourteen. I don't want to go over fourteen. In my mind, it's fourteen because then we're gonna give back the thirty-three percent. So, I personally, I love column one, but I could see myself going to column two. I too feel like, yes, we have done our due diligence, I am not taking that away from this Board. It, there is not, there's, yes, there is this bright shiny penny that, with the kids, the building that the kids are gonna walk into is gonna be a safe building, it's gonna be a building where they can learn, but all the things that we want. A lot of it is gonna be behind the scenes and in the walls and the things that aren't pretty. But I do, I do worry about us going to the town for eighteen, to the town for eighteen-five. I'm happy that Maywood passed and a couple of the other towns, it does give me a little bit of hope. But I personally would rather stick with like column two. Preferably really, column one is my favorite, though. But I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna be like, you know, no, and, you know, I won't support it, you know, dang well, I'll be here, like, you know, with my black and gold at my house and like, you know, signs on the lawn, whatever it takes to get this through, so.
Okay. I, I do not consider myself an expert in education nor referendums, so I try to get as many facts as I can. I don't want to say I would dig my heels in and could never be swayed to think the other way. I've had conversations with Patrick, you know, about this, and I want to be known that when, when Trudy and Patrick went to the architect for revisions, they weren't just reducing the square footage cost from the original. You know, they pared down some of the, like, the locker rooms, we were not doing what they had initially for two million dollars set out to do. They've cut some things out of the project. That's how we, I'm assuming they still kept their dollar amount per square footage.
Correct.
Number, but we just pared down some of these jobs. That's how we did get to these numbers. And in my conversations with Patrick about some of these issues, he did mention something that, you know, makes a lot of sense to me, and I hope you don't mind, you know, me sharing, Patrick. The referendum, the way it's set up is a well-balanced referendum, meaning a large segment of it is in between the walls. These are old buildings, they need some of this infrastructure to be improved, so for instance, the unit ventilators and the boiler controls for both buildings, and then the heating, ventilation, air conditioning in the cafeteria and kitchen and the middle school, these are all things that the students and staffs will feel, and with upgraded systems, it'll be more efficient and can hopefully lower our utility bills as well. I mean, that's a little side benefit to it. There's a, there's a piece of this referendum that's an instructional piece, and, you know, you could read down and figure out the refurbishing of this, certain rooms and then the, the eighteen to twenty-one area that we want to do and the STEM rooms and the art rooms. Then there's also an art piece of the referendum, primarily the auditorium, some of the upgrades in both buildings in the auditorium. And then there's an athletic part of the referendum, which would be the locker rooms and the gymnasium floors. So, to go all in at eighteen-five with the, as Alan and John respectfully mentioned with the so-called give-back-by-the-state of thirty-four percent, I would be in favor of doing everything. So, I don't know where we go from here. I mean, it, it sounds like it's seven to two, or I don't want to, we can go around and vote again, and, and would that be the simplest way to take care of this at this point?
Somebody needs to make a motion, a motion on one of these particular areas.
Okay.
And vote on that.
Okay.
So, are we, because on the resolution that I, that's on the agenda. I did not include the gym floors.
Correct.
And if we were to do that, it would be added under the capital renovation components for each, for each building, the middle school and the high school, and it would just say complete renovations, gymnasium floor replacement, refinishing.
Okay.
Why don't I revise my original motion for this one and include the adjustment as Trudy mentioned it?
That would be fine.
I think it was my motion.
Alan made it, but you're making an amendment to the resolution.
Or Alan can amend it if he likes.
And are you putting a number to that, John?
It's definitely the last column all the way on the right.
For you to say it.
Total cost, if we do all the projects, would be eighteen million, five-hundred-and-forty-three-thousand-three-hundred-and-fifty.
Glad you read it and not me.
Right.
I like the much better one's eighteen thousand.
Or Doug?
So, we need a second for that amendment?
Yeah, I'll second it.
Thank you, Alan.
Alan second that?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Second.
To the amendment. John, Alan second. And that's for column four?
Column four.
Column four.
Okay.
That's the affection of the referendum.
Yeah.
I feel like every meeting, we get an additional column.
We did.
Right? Every meeting.
I did, I did add another column.
Like, there's another column!
Okay, do we want to go around for a vote?
Okay, so.
So, now it's a roll call.
Okay, so now Claudia?
I'm gonna say no, but I'm still like, you know, behind-the-scenes supporting.
Alan?
Yes.
I'm off, one second. Alan, yes. John?
Yes.
Annette?
Yes.
Tracy Allen?
Yes.
Doug?
Yes.
Barbara?
Yes.
Stephanie?
No.
Al?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, kiddies, we're going for a referendum.
So, I just want to express on behalf of the school administration, our thanks to the Board for their due diligence, for being part of initiating this project well over, well, it's not well over, but it's close to a year ago, when we had a motion on the agenda to engage the architect. So, I very much appreciate your, your stick-to-it-iveness with this issue and to get us to this point where now we can get things moving along. Thank you very much.
Let's get into old business, new business.
I'm sorry, there's one more thing I should say, and I want to thank Mrs. Engel for putting up with my neuroses over the last six weeks over this issue because I generally drove her crazy, and I appreciate all your help. Thank you very much.
We probably ended up at that number. Thanks, sir.
Are you through?
I am, sir, thank you.
Old business, new business. I have one thing to start. I think we need to put an August meeting on the calendar since we do not have one. I believe we added one last year, if I'm not mistaken, but because we have a new incoming superintendent in July, I think it would benefit everybody if we, if we did have a meeting in August.
And if we're gonna do that, we should adjust the date in October for, because we have a meeting the week of the School Board Convention. So, we should move it to another Monday night.
Or adjust them at the same time. Is that what you mean, adjust them?
Would it be helpful, then, for me to contact Jim and ask him if there's any plans, any confusions that are there? If you want to throw out a couple of dates, I'll do that, but we, I don't think you should vote on the change yet until I get his.
Okay, that's fair enough. We could do it next meeting.
Well, if you give me a couple of dates, I'll start it out, so, because we usually meet on a Monday, are you thinking about?
And then Pat, you're gonna pick a new date for, you could propose a new date for the same motion for October.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so here's August.
Thank you, Alan.
So, there's the seventh, the fourteenth, the twenty-first, or the twenty-eighth.
Fourteenth is not good for me.
So seven, twenty-one, twenty-eight.
Twenty-eight is not good for me.
Okay, seven, fourteen.
Winter-July meeting.
July twenty-fourth, if I can.
Twenty-first it is. Going away now.
Now, it's a business thing.
No, no, I just.
So August twenty-one, looks like the date that we're going to.
Everyone here?
Yeah, I can do that.
I will ask, I should just point out to you, it's my understanding that in your, in the contract that you executed with Dr. Albro, you have a timeline in there for having a meeting to set goals.
Sixty days.
Right, so if that's okay, what I'll do is I'll also communicate with that, with him, because I do believe that your first meeting in July would fit in that calendar inside that. And if that's the case, then you would have, I think both of these would fit in there, actually. But then you could both have, you could have a multiple, or get two birds with one stone, shall we say? Okay, great, thank you.
Which October date conflicts with school boards? The second one?
The second.
So that would have to be changed?
Is it like, you know, twenty?
Twenty-third.
Just move that to the thirtieth.
We had a good time, right, Annette?
Not really.
Encourage more people to come out. We had fun.
We did.
We had fun.
We had fun.
Learning is fun. No, no, but I, outside the learning environment, we also had fun.
Yeah.
Okay. Does anyone have anything to add to old business, new business?
I went to the play, and as always, the kids are amazing. I don't know, like, the kids from behind the scenes, whoever made the sets, like, just, like, the actors, the actresses, just incredible, and it just says so much to the support that Riverdale gives to our theater program. The kids were amazing.
I'd like to second that. You know, like Pat, my daughter's favorite movie when she was a kid was, you know, Little Mermaid, and she too turned thirty this year. So it brought a tear to my eye going to see it, but it was outstanding, really. I mean, you didn't even think for a minute that you were at a high school presentation. It was so professionally done, and so impressive, and their voices, I mean, can't say enough about it.
Very good. Anybody else?
Wanted to acknowledge, I believe, the same, correctly, CUSAC and everything that went on in the midst of tweaking this referendum to the best, most responsible way. But CUSAC is quite an undertaking, and in the midst of our regular audits and CUSAC and things that I don't think we can ever quite understand, to come out of it the other end, I hope you guys get a moment to exhale. There's a lot to exhale. I don't know when you're coming up for air, but hopefully, it's coming soon. But congratulations on that, to the staff who has your back as well. It's quite a feat. And between the clean audit, in the midst of what's going on currently in the media, well done and congratulations, well earned. Thank you.
I had something on the tip of my finger. Oh, superintendent search is complete, referendum's complete. We now have to finish.
Is it complete?
Well.
It's chosen.
Our work.
It's chosen!
Right. I stand corrected. We now have to complete our portrait of a graduate.
Portrait of a graduate.
A graduate and portrait of a graduate, right?
Right.
Yeah.
We're on, we're coming back.
Okay, we're on task. Very good. Anybody else have anything? Okay, let's get into public comments. Any public comments on anything? Okay. May I have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make that motion.
Second?
Second.
Tracy Allen seconding.
Oh.
Tracy Allen seconding.
Hold in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
There you go.